And I just before we started, just wanted to welcome a new board member, Dave Esri. Thank you very much, he replaces Chris Fournier. Welcome to the board. So call to order, can I have any declaration of conflicts today? Seeing none, an approval of the agenda. Moved by Jackie, seconded by Bob, all those in favor? Sin, you in favor?
In favor.
Rosemary, are you online? All right, okay, moving right along, adoption of the minutes from our January seventh meeting. And seconded by Jackie. And all business arising from the minutes.
Just a question.
And that was Mr. Conley that moved, please, thank you. Let's go ahead.
Just kind of page six, it was talking about the department meeting. It was about the format, I know we had discussed at the last meeting the format of the open session and number of meetings we'd be having and that sort of thing. Actually, I think it was Rosemary that brought it up, that the number of meetings mattered. And here it was talking about the department will be meeting with the communications team shortly and come up with strategies on how the public meeting will be facilitated. Is there any, just for the benefit of all here, is there any update on what that would look like? How that's going to be set up, just if the public is looking to engage and comment, how they participate in the public consultation, upcoming public consultation session?
In terms of the official plan, public meeting?
Yeah.
I do believe there was a communications meeting and a communication strategy put together. David, not to put you on the spot because I know it's not really your file, but it's my understanding that a communications plan has been put together with James and with Director Mike to further get the information out there. But do you have anything else that you could add? Or should we just ask for an email to the board for an update?
Yeah, through the chair, I would go that route, I don't really think further to add. The public meeting is next week on the thirteenth at five P M. in Council Chamber, or sorry, at LaRue Hotel rather. But I don't really have anything further of value to add, I would encourage what the chair suggested, so.
Okay, is that good for you?
Yeah, it'd be nice to get that out so people are aware of what they can. Because I know we've had some questions about what we are allowed to do or how we're allowed to present, format and all that sort of stuff. So might be good to have clarification for that for those that are looking to attend.
And it will be very similar to any other public meeting. You don't have to pre-register, you have your five minutes to speak. You can, obviously, it's a city document, city application, so you'll have your five minutes to present and to, and so from there like, you know, when the public comes to speak, they're not coming with slide presentations or anything like that, they're just coming to meet up and they have five minutes. So it will be similar that way. But I will follow up with the director and get him to send out just an email and let us know where we are in the stage in terms of the comms plan on how we are making sure that we engage the public to the best of our ability. Great, thank you for that, Counselor Guy. So adoption of the minutes, we did that, any business arising from the minutes, we did that, we're moving right on to reports. And our first report is a variance for fifty-eight Victoria Street, P I D. three four four two three four. And Michael is here, our planner two, to present to us. Over to you, Michael.
Hello, if you could just go to the next slide there, Jason. Appreciate it. Okay, so I'm presenting a request for a minor variance to allow projections into the rear yard setbacks to accommodate the construction of an attached garage on an existing single detached dwelling as the proposal does not currently meet the rear yard setback regulations outlined in the R three zone. Next slide. This project has already had one stage occur, which is that the lots have consolidated. So there were two lots originally, those have now been consolidated and those new setbacks have been reviewed. The subject property is located on a corner lot within the medium density residential R three zone containing a single detached dwelling. This written property consists of single detached residential, low density residential and R three zones and primarily contains single detached dwellings, they're converted dwellings as well. That's kind of the site context. Next slide. The development proposal for this specific site includes a garage to the rear of the existing dwelling unit. The garage is placed too close to the rear yard for our current bylaw rules, our rear setback. It's quite a minor projection into that setback, so permissible rules would see six meters and this is off by point five seven. So quite close to what is permissible in the current bylaw. Next slide. We did send letters out to the public. So in accordance with section three point nine of the zoning and development bylaw, a January fifteen twenty twenty five written notice was sent to property owners located within a hundred meters of the subject property. A total of eighty-four letters were sent and we received no comments. Next slide. This is a pretty minor development from our review. Garage development is reasonable scale, it's just a one level garage in the rear of the property and it's designed to minimize impacts on neighboring properties. The proposed development height is permitted, there's no height variance or anything that would impact sight lines. Neutral aspects of the development proposal is that the renovation has already occurred. The new lot rules, the new lot setback rules essentially are already in place and they have those new land rights based off those dimensions. And shortcomings of the proposal, the proposed site plan does not meet that rear setback and there's increased lot coverage compared to what is currently allowed, or currently onsite. Next slide. Planning and Heritage Department encourages planning board to recommend to council that the following minor variance for the subject property address fifty-eight Victoria Street, P I D. three five three four three three, be approved to allow construction of an attached garage. And the recommendation is projected into the rear yard setback of point five seven meters, whereas the minimum required setback is six meters. Is otherwise required in the rear property boundary as per section eleven point two of the zoning and development bylaw.
Thank you very much for that, so I'll open it up for questions.
I have a question, if it's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I just, I know the house, my brother used to live beside it, I love the home, but is this a heritage home?
I don't believe.
Yes, it used to be the old slog at it.
Yeah, like it said it was constructed in eighteen fifty.
It was on Houston Street and.
I didn't see a provincial, or a city designation, but.
It was on Houston Street and Spring Park Road and they moved down to fifty-eight Peak Street.
It does have a heritage history.
I just, I just wanted to make sure.
I didn't see it on the city list, but I might have missed it.
And I guess you can do.
It would also not, it would almost. It would be permissible as a. Because it's not in the court, yeah.
Right.
It's an permissible use.
Okay, I just was.
Thank you for that, yes, Bobby?
This property was up a couple of years ago, I think.
This app, yes, this place was up.
And at the time, I think the grad was coming out right to the Peak Street and I think public work may have had an issue with it. But are public works okay with it now? Like is there a water assessment done there, drainage?
So this has been all through all of the departments, checks and balances have been done, that's why it's here today, so, yep. The, yep.
Thank you. Also just note that it has gone through the consolidation phase, so this is the second stage of that. So has been reviewed also as a slot dimension.
Great, any other questions? If not. Oh yes, go ahead, Sin, I'm sorry.
It's okay, my chair, I just want to inform that, you know, I'm not being able to see the slides, you know, through the screen, you know, for the, you know, staff to know. But I have read, you know, from the package, you know, that should be fine. But I think in the next applications, you know, it would be great if the staff can just make sure that I can see the slides. So I can see it right now.
And just, if you've got your tablet there, every slide that came up on the board are slides that are in, that were in your package, but for sure, do note it, for sure.
Thank you so much, my chairman.
Yep, you're welcome. So staff is recommending that we approve this application. So do I have anyone that would get moved by Lee? Seconded by Mr. Conley. So the resolution is on the floor to approve this minor variance. All those in favor? Okay, anybody?
In favor.
Sin, are you in favor?
In favor, my chair.
Great, okay, thank you very much for that. Remind me, David, this ends here, does this go on to council?
Through the chair, so just to confirm that, minor variance, we didn't receive any objections for it.
So therefore it doesn't, it ends here.
It ends here, it's a staff delegated approval.
Right, yeah. So just for clarification, thank you for your vote, we had received no objection for this, so this now is considered approved for the applicant, so. Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Michael. Okay, moving on to the next application, we have, Stephanie is online to present today. And it's forty-five Spring Park Road, P I D. three four zero two four zero and again, it's another request for a minor variance. Over to you, Stephanie.
Good afternoon, members of the board, I'll be presenting the second item on the agenda for the minor variance located at forty-five Spring Park Road, property I D. three five three six one five, to allow for projections into the side yard setback along the south side of the subject property. Please note that there is a clerical correction in the recommendation in the report. With this being a minor variance, the application does not need to be heard by council and it may be approved directly by the development officer. Next slide, please. So did you move to the next slide?
Sorry, yeah, we're.
Sorry, thank you. The intent of the minor variance is to allow for projections into the side yard setback, which will allow the property owner to retrofit their existing single detached dwelling to be more energy efficient and as a result, this will cause the dwelling to project into the south side yard setback. Next slide, please. The subject property is outlined and read on the site plan and shows the eve to have a zero point five meter setback from the south property line and the facade having a separation of zero point nine four meters from that property line. Our setback requirements in the zoning and development bylaw require one point eight three meters separation from the property line to the facade, while the eve is permitted to project into that setback by zero point six meters. So with this proposal, it would not be meeting our bylaw and hence the minor variance. Next slide, please. In accordance with section three point nine of the zoning and development bylaw, on January tenth, two thousand twenty-five, written notification was sent to property owners located within a hundred meters of the subject property. A total of seventy letters were sent to residents advising them of the application to request comments and feedback. Comments were received from the circulation letters, however, the comments were not regarding the scope of the application and about other issues in the area that would not be worsened by the projections into the side yard setback. Next slide, please. Staff's analysis of the proposal concluded that the development would result in an energy efficient home, which aligns with federal, provincial and municipal climate goals. Additionally, there's no risk of obstructed views or shadowing for the neighboring properties. Despite the reduced setback on the south side, the east men along the north side of the property will ensure that there's adequate access to the rear of the property in the event of an emergency. Next slide, please. Planning and Heritage Department encourages planning board to recommend that the following minor variance for the subject property addressed as forty-five Spring Park Road, P I D. three five three six one five, be approved to allow for the proposed retrofitting of an existing non-conforming residential dwelling, resulting in the expansion of the footprint where the structure is permitted to, one, project in the side yard setback area on the south side by zero point eight nine meters, which is two point nine two feet, and the eve to project one point three three meters, four point three six five feet, or four point three six feet into the side yard setback. That concludes my first presentation for this afternoon, thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Any questions from planning board? I just had one question and I'm sure I have the right property. It's already in the middle of construction now. I'm just wondering, does that mean that it was just a slow process to get this to us? Or is it that they got to this stage and then they had to apply? Like I just, you know, I'm just wondering about process of, you know, would this application normally have been before the renovations started? Or just out of, just looking forward, clarification, Stephanie?
To my knowledge, they didn't think that they needed a building permit. We requested that they applied for one, so they halted construction. Part of the construction is not included in this variance, so they were able to proceed with that. And the reason for the delay is we had sent out the letters and then the Canada Post strike kind of hindered that. So we sent the letters out and the strike happened the next day and we weren't sure if the letters were received, so we paused it until we knew that we could send them out again and that they would be received, so we had to wait till the new year. They did end up getting received by the public, but we still held back because we wanted to ensure that everyone got their letters and had their time to provide comment.
Great, thank you for that, Stephanie, I figured must have happened.
That happened with both of the applications today.
I'm sure, yeah, nice to have that strike over with. Anybody else have any questions for Stephanie?
What type of structure is being constructed? Am I missing that in this chapter?
Give me the picture.
So basically, they're just retrofitting a home to make it more energy efficient. So I believe it's more like, they're putting probably, and David might know this better than I, I think they're just kind of putting more insulation and whatnot into it and that kind of makes the facade project out. It's really not projecting any further because it's already a non-conforming structure. To my knowledge, it's only going out a couple more inches.
Oh, okay.
But it was a grandfathered use, so once you start making changes, it instantly triggers a minor variance in this case.
And you'll know in that area, folks, most structures are legal non-conforming in that area. So it's not an odd thing to see such a thing happen. So the recommendation is for us to approve this application. There's been, if this board approves it, then the development officer has the ability to grant the permit. So do I have, okay, moved by Counselor McCabe. Do I have somebody to second it? Seconded by our new member, Dave. So the resolution's on the floor, any questions on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor? Sin, are you in favor?
In favor.
Great, okay, that was unanimous, so thank you very much for that and good luck with your renovations. Okay, moving on to our next applicant, our next item on the agenda. Once again, Stephanie will be presenting, it is seventy-two Queen Elizabeth Drive and it is.
Excuse me, can I make a statement about that forty-five Spring Park Road?
Actually, unfortunately, the application is done now and it's not usually, it's not usually a time for a public call. Because it's not a requiredness public meeting, that this doesn't have to go to a public consultation, so the application has been approved, yeah.
So we have no say in speaking what we have to say about it.
David, do you want to speak to the gentleman?
Yeah, I'll just say through the chair that the application is subject to a twenty-one day appeal period to I RAC, so there is an ability, once we've issued the approval, so this is delegated to staff to approve because it's a minor variance. It will go on a permitted applicant.
Well, I was told by my surveyor that it's from the foundation into the inside of the private patient, six inches, if it's over that, it's a major variance.
The threshold.
It's open today.
Yeah, the threshold would be if it's greater than a fifteen percent differential from, if it's within fifteen percent of what it currently is, then we can flow it through the minor variance vehicle. If it exceeds fifteen percent difference, then it has.
He says it's more than fifteen percent, my survey.
All I'm trying to clarify is that there is recourse here, that one can appeal the approval. Once the staff approve it, that approval can be appealed to I RAC. So even though we approve it, there is a recourse there for somebody to file an appeal on that approval.
Is it due to appeal today?
You have to wait while it technically is not approved until staff approve it, which will not be today. It'll be following today, but once, the city will publish that approval on our weekly permit list, which is published every Friday. And once that list has been released, it will show the deadline by which to appeal to I RAC. So there's a twenty-one, excuse me, twenty-one day window in which that approval can be appealed.
No, I wasn't sure about the process, but I didn't know it was approved after the second vote here.
No, well, it can be, it'll be approved following today by staff, but then we essentially.
The staff here or the staff of the planning department?
Planning staff, yeah, so one of our development officers, most likely Ms. McDonald, who presented the report, will sign off on that approval. And then that approval will go on a list on the next list that's published by the city. It will state the deadline by which an appeal can be filed to I RAC. So there is an ability to appeal the approval to I RAC following today.
Can I make a statement today about it or?
I defer to the chair.
The board meeting would be the appropriate time for that.
Only have five minutes to make a comment?
It's not usually the, it's not usually the place for those statements. When, I assume you probably received a letter?
I received two letters. I told meeting to be here at four thirty today.
Okay, so, but you can send in the questions to the planning officer?
I didn't speak to the planning officers, we had disagreements.
May I speak for a moment?
Yes, you can, Steph, yes.
The comments that were brought forward to me were about the fence and the construction on the front of the property, which have nothing to do with the variance because the variance is only on the south side.
Thank you for that clarification.
On the south side, there's been, it's on Doak and the media put on the south side. And it's on the new built eve of the property.
Okay, so I think David had outlined that and I'm really sorry that we don't have any more information to give you today, it's not the platform that we can debate this.
Okay, go ahead, what's the process, I gotta go through it.
The process would be now, when this, when the development officer signs off on this permit tomorrow, in the coming days, it will go up as a notification that the, that this was approved, an approved permit and then you have twenty-one days.
She said there's a minimum of two inches, it's more than two inches. It's like seven to nine inches.
So you will have an opportunity, you have an opportunity to appeal our development officer's approval through I RAC. That's your, that is the platform to which you file your appeals.
I would call the planning department and someone can kind of provide you with those next steps.
I did call the planning, but we got into conflict because of the parking signs of the facial department. She said two inches, it's like from the foundation to the inside of the bylaw, it's seven inches and to the outside, it's nine inches on both sides.
So thank you for that, I hear your frustration, I know you want answers. If you have any problems getting through to the planning department, please reach out to me and I will help facilitate that process for you. We do have to move on to this application, thank you very much, so. All right, so over to you, Stephanie, seventy-two Queen Elizabeth Drive.
Thank you, the final item on the agenda this afternoon is for the major variance located at seventy-two Queen Elizabeth Drive, property I D. three five zero three five five, to allow for an appointment based home occupation. Next slide, please. The intent of the minor variance is to allow for appointment based home occupation for a massage therapy business within a residential zone and for council to establish the required parking stalls and maximum amount of daily and weekly visits. Next slide, please. The subject property is located on an interior residential lot within the single detached residential zone containing a single family dwelling. Surrounding properties also consist of R one L zones containing primarily single family dwellings. Next slide, please. The proposed floor and site plan provided by the applicant shows the layout of the home and where the business will operate within the home as well as the onsite parking that they can accommodate, which is well over four tandem parking spaces. Next slide, please. In accordance with section three point nine of the zoning and development bylaw, on January tenth, two thousand twenty-five, written notification was sent to property owners within a hundred meters of the subject property. A total of thirty-six letters were sent to the residents advising them of the application to request comments and feedback, no comments or concerns were received. Next slide, please, thank you. Staff's analysis of the proposal concluded that the development would have limited impacts on the surrounding properties as there's adequate onsite parking and all activities are taking place inside the home. There could be an increase in traffic with the residential area, within the residential area. However, this can be addressed through setting maximum daily and weekly business visits. Next slide, please. The planning and heritage department encourages planning board to recommend to council that the following major variance for the subject property addresses seventy-two Queen Elizabeth Drive, P I D. three five zero three five five, be approved to allow for an appointment based home occupation to accommodate massage therapy business and request that council establish the approved number of clients permitted to visit per day and maximum number of business based visits per week and the required onsite parking for the proposed home.
It's, she said two inches, it's like uh, from the foundation to. The inside of the private, it's seven inches, and to the outside, it's nine inches on both sides.
So, thank you for that, I hear your frustration, I know you want answers. Um, if you have any problems getting through to the planning department, um, please reach out to me and I will help facilitate that process for you. We do have to move on to this application, thank you very much, so. All right, so over to you, Stephanie, seventy-two Queen Elizabeth Drive.
Thank you, the final item on the agenda this afternoon is for the major variance located at seventy-two Queen Elizabeth Drive. Property ID three five zero, three five five, to allow for an appointment-based home occupation, next slide please. The intent of the minor variance is to allow for appointment-based home occupation for a massage therapy business within a residential zone. And for council to establish the required parking stalls and maximum amount of daily and weekly visits, next slide please. The subject property is located on an interior residential lot within the single detached residential zone containing a single family dwelling. Surrounding properties also consist of R one L zones containing primarily single-family dwellings, next slide please. The proposed floor and site plan provided by the applicant shows the layout of the home and where the business will operate. Um, within the home as well as the onsite parking that they can accommodate, which is well over four tandem parking spaces. Next slide please. In accordance with section three point nine of the zoning and development bylaw, on Sept- oh, on January tenth, twenty twenty-five. Written notification was sent to property owners within a hundred meters of the subject property. A total of thirty-six letters were sent to the residents advising them of the application to request comments and feedback, no comments or concerns were received. Next slide please, thank you. Uh, staff's analysis of the proposal concluded that the development would have limited impacts on the surrounding properties as there's adequate onsite parking. And all activities are taking place uh inside the home. There could be an increase in traffic with the residential area, within the residential area. However, this can be addressed through setting maximum daily and weekly business visits, next slide please. The planning and heritage department encourages planning board to recommend to council that the following major variance for the subject property addresses seventy-two Queen Elizabeth Drive. PID three five zero, three five five, be approved to allow for an appointment-based home occupation to accommodate massage therapy business. And request that council establish the approved number of clients permitted to visit per day and maximum number of business-based visits per week. And the required onsite parking for the proposed home occupation. That concludes my final presentation for this afternoon, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, for your presentation, any uh questions from the board, yes Bobby?
Um, thank you Chair, um, just, I noticed it says the approved number of clients permitted to visit per day. And a maximum number of business-based visits per week are to be established by a council. So, do we have that information, do we know how many?
That's what it does, put it in, right?
Um, uh, Stephanie, can you clarify that for us?
Um, I don't have, I haven't set a maximum for either of those, it was, it's for council, but I can. Kind of do a little bit of research and see what would be a best and have that ready for council, um.
So if this is approved today and move on to council, by the time it goes to council. You'll be, you'll be giving council a recommendation of the, in that, kind of that development agreement. The approved number of clients permitted per day and the maximum number of business, business per week?
Yes, I can do that, um, and I can send that suggestion forward, I wasn't sure of the protocol because it, it does stipulate that they make the decision. But I can definitely make the suggestion, um, I can compare it to other municipalities and see what they use, cause it's usually written within the bylaw.
And I'm pretty sure in terms of best practice, that that recommendation is included in the, for planning board as well. I don't remember it ever not being with planning board too.
Okay.
Un- unless, unless you can tell me differently, David. You, usually a recommendation from the planning board, to the planning board would include that. I don't think council has the expertise to decide on how many clients somebody should have per week, or.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a question on this, you know, do we even have the authority to, uh, you know, as planning board, and I. Sure, this extends to the council when they make a decision on this, even have an authority to, you know, decide on the number of clients? Because that is infringing on, is if you, you, our, our job is to whether we should allow the business to happen in this particular location or not. But beyond that, you, you know, you cannot regulate business. We are not, we're regulating land use, we're not regulating business, I understand the parking requirement is one of those, that people can always walk to a business.
Yeah, that's a great question because you're right, our decisions here are about land use. Um, thank you for that, we're gonna park that for a second, cause councillor Beck, you had a question and I apologize, you had your hand up.
Well, I, I, I was just wondering the same thing, like, is this the applicant here?
Yeah.
Could, could we ask, could I ask her, what is, what's a reasonable, like, what, what, what's your expectation about this, I mean?
Like, I, I don't have any plans to do this immediately, or, um, but I generally see three to five people a day. Through a window of, like, my hours currently and I rent office space in town, it's like ten till six P M. So I'm not ever gonna see more than that, and if I ever bring my practice home, it would be to a maximum of five people in a. Seven-hour window, and it's only ever one person at a time.
Right.
And um, I generally see between sixteen and twenty-five people a week. Like, I work four to five days a week.
Right.
Yeah.
So if we were to put in parameters around that, there would be no problem with us establishing those parameters, and you'd be comfortable, and that would be. I mean, you've got a big parking lot, you've got room for up to six vehicles there. Uh, it's a pretty, it's a very wide street. Um, obviously, there's been no one in the area that has any concerns about, about the initiative, so. I, I just didn't know what a number would be reasonable to put in there, if you're saying that, you know, uh. Up to, anywhere from twenty to twenty-five per week, uh, something like that, up to, up to twenty-five. Whatever that might be, at least it gives me a bit of a perspective as to what we're looking at.
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna, I don't think it'll affect any flow, but people really won't know I'm there, there's not gonna be signage, I'm not seeking clients, it's. It'll just be accessibility-wise easier because it's ground floor for my clients.
Yep.
Great.
Um, yeah, I know, I know I'm there.
Thank you, Sarah, Sarah is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Sarah, um, before I get Lee's question. Either Stephanie or our, our manager, can you clarify what Sin had to say there? Like, are we actually empowered as a council to put the clients and the businesses per week? Into this because we're just approving land use, so can we first clarify that? Cause if, if, if it's not in our power to do that, we should just remove that part of it and just go straight with the recommendation, but. Uh, Stephanie, first you, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, um, but I ask you first, or you can defer to uh manager David.
Sorry, can you repeat, oh, what you want me to clarify?
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, Sin had had a good point there, we're here to approve, um, uh, a major variance. And, you know, are we as a, as a staff and as a committee, or as a board and then as a council. Empowered to actually add into that the amount of clients permitted per week and the amount of business per week? You know, when we're really here just to approve the land use variance?
I don't think that the planning board is to do that, but the way that the bylaw's written, it says the council to do it. That being said, I've not seen. Sorry.
Sorry, I apologize, you know, the, the role of the planning board is, you know, again, make recommendations to the council based on all these, you know, factors. And if the planning board doesn't have the power to know that information, get that information, and, and the council has it, this is, this is clear discrepancies of the procedure. Now, coming back to the point, the question is not about whether we can make decisions on land use or not. That is absolutely within the powers of the planning board, and as described in the municipal government act and the planning act. However, my question is, is whether we are, we have the power to regulate a business? Because business regulation is not within municipal jurisdiction.
I think in past practice, sorry.
Um, so, Sin first of all has a question, uh, either Stephanie or David, can you answer that? Before we move on, David.
I'm gonna defer to David.
Okay, thanks Stephanie, thank you.
Through, through the chair, um, conditions two and three that are in the recommendation, those are compelled by the current zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw prescribes that when we, uh, if you recommend passage of one of these. You have to include those, and it's up to council to decide number of clients permitted, number of uh on-street, onsite parking for these. Those are actually things written into the bylaw, compelled for council to make the decision on. And we basically have just flowed through what the bylaw says in that recommendation. I can't speak to whether that's legal or not, but that's what the bylaw says, and that's why that shows up in our report.
So David, when this comes to, I just, I don't remember us ever having to do this before. So if we approve this through planning board to move on to council, and the planning board has recommended this, then council's gonna debate. Parking and, and how many visits per week?
Yep, because the bylaw prescri- prescribes that.
Go ahead Stephanie, I give you, go ahead.
I, I just, um, like, the way the bylaw's written, we have to take it through council, and it says that they're to make this, the decision. That being said, I know that they're not, um, maybe they're not planning professionals, so they're not used to doing this kind of stuff. We can make the suggestion, my suggestion would be no more than five business-associated vehicle visits a day on the parcel. And a maximum of fifteen business-associated vehicle visits per week. And then I would say they need to have one parking stall, because typically with these types of businesses, you'd only see one person at a, at a time.
Madam Chair.
Just, just a second, um, just a second, Sin, Julie, uh councillor McCabe, um, is, is in the queue next for a question, go ahead, councillor McCabe.
Well, in, in the six years that I'm sure this has been in, but it's really the first time I've ever seen this in any business application that we've approved in my six years on council.
Yeah.
We have included development agreements in past, which we've worked with the property owner, if there was gonna be an issue on parking or. Or, uh, you know, amount of people coming, if that was a concern, we've done that way before. But we've, I've never seen an application where we've, where the bylaw has done this, so, to me. I, I'm with Sin on the sense that I think it's, it's within reason, um, that maybe you keep your home-based business hours, it's respectful. I'm sure you wanna be a good neighbor anyway, because uh, I can't imagine wanting to uh cause, stir that up, but I've never seen this in past practice. Uh, at all, I know we've put in development agreements, but I've never seen this in any report, so it's new, that's great.
I, uh, all I can say is that if we're looking at section five point nine point one. And you go and you look at subsection, um. K, the maximum number of clients permitted on the premises of appointment-based home occupations at any one time will be determined by council. I'm following the bylaw as it's written, if it was not followed before, I'm not quite sure what happened, but I'm following it as it's written today, and.
Oh, I'm not, I was, I'm thinking you're doing a great job, I'm just saying, in my, in my experience, I've never seen it, I'm not saying you're not correct, I'm sure it's in there and it was just. Never presented before, so please don't take, take that as a criticism, criticism.
By no means, no, um, Lee, did you get your question answered?
Not yet, that's okay.
No, you go ahead and then Jackie and then Sin, sorry.
I'm just asking if this permit is for massage therapy only, it's.
Yes, it is.
Doesn't turn into physiotherapy or any other type of business out of the house?
No, that is, the application is for massage, so if, um, and. If, if I recall, if the property owner sells their property.
Yes.
Massage therapy business as stated follows the property of the house. However, that business, if that person is going to operate a business there, that would be them having to get a business license. And a whole other separateness, but no, it can't turn into a hair salon or, or anything else, it's, 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 um. It's contingent on that type of business, yep.
Sorry, can I just say one?
Yes, go ahead, Stephanie.
Um, it's also, through the chair, it's also written in my first uh recommendation that it is for massage therapy business. So it is specific to what, what type of business it is.
Yep, gotcha, yep, thank you, Jackie.
I'm uh, I'm fully in support of, of this application, uh, I think it's a strange bylaw, but if we have to follow it, then we have to do what we have to do. The idea though of five vehicle visits a day and then fifteen a week, it's like if she wants to work five days a week and five clients a day, then like. Fifteen seems a bit limiting to me, I don't, I, I just, it figured, it seems to me like you just pick a number. Pick the higher upper bound and then just leave it at that and allow her to conduct business as she wants to without getting into nitty-gritty.
Thanks Jackie, um, Stephanie or David, is this planning board, um, allowed to include? Um, their recommendation for the approved number of clients permitted to visit per day and per week. Um, along with yours to move on to council, is there any stipulation in the bylaw that states that they can't do that?
I'll let David, um, uh, speak to that, please.
Um, through, through the chair, the board's within the power to put whatever conditions on the recommendation that they see fit, I don't think you'd be offside by doing that. Ultimately, like, the planning board is not an approval authority, so the final approval would rest.
Okay.
Council, but you can make a friendly recommendation, friendly amendment to say, you know, we would otherwise suggest perhaps this many and this many.
Perfect, so I would recommend to this board, if they wish, to add that recommendation in. And then when, when this comes to council, or however you decide to, um, um, vote on this application. I can then explain that to the um council, you know, how we got to where we got to and, and the recommendation. If, um, if, if you choose to, that's not too offside, is it Stephanie?
No, that's totally fine, I was just kind of giving a suggestion.
Sure.
We wanted to make sure that we're not having too much traffic in the area, so.
Yep.
Um, that was my suggestion, totally, totally open to you guys to, um, to provide a different one.
Sure, so Jackie had, oh, Sin, you had a question, go ahead.
Yes, I was just questioning the recommendation came, if, if, if the recommendation was, uh, you know. Came from a proper study, or just a, you know, cause it wasn't mentioned in the package, not in the recommendation that I see on my screen right now. Uh, fifteen or five vehicles, I mean, if you're giving a number, then you give, you have to have rational with that too. And I, and I completely agree with resident member Jackie that this is limiting as well. You know, I'm, I'm in favor of this recommendation, I'm just questioning the, you know, uh, you know, the rationale for the exact number of. Clients permitted to visit, and, uh, and, and the maximum, I mean, we can have some sort of a criteria around like, you know, okay. The business can operate between this and this hours and all, that's understandable. But, you know, limiting the client and without even understanding the nature of the business, the number of people that can visit. And to be honest with you, if the, if the applicant wants to, you know, you know, probably, you know. Do more, take more clients in the home business, they should be allowed to have more clients, um, again, subject to being a good neighbor and, you know, other, other factors. But it has to be studied, and you know, they have to have some rationals behind it.
Yeah, uh, through the chair, um, well, this is a residential area, so we don't want it operating like a commercial. Location where people can freely flow in and out, um, you still wanna keep that. You know, the peace and enjoyment of residential area, so when you're giving a free-for-all of how many people can go into. Into a residential area for a business, it, the, the house is essentially operating as a commercial business, um. For the number, I, this is based off past experiences, and that's typically how they, they set it, they have a, a weekly. And the daily maximums, um, typically around five per day, that being said, if you want to keep it at five per day. And then, you know, having your total, um, five times seven, thirty-five, then that, that's totally up to you guys, if you would like to suggest that.
I would maybe just add, if the chair and board are interested, staff can certainly come back with a more fulsome review of options. That the board can consider in their recommendation eventually to council. I'll defer to you if you wanna consider that.
That's a, that's a great consideration, um, if that's the will of the board.
I think we heard from the applicant that she's not in a rush right now to make this going to be, so it's probably something we could defer this until the next meeting. There's more information to come if people want that.
Or is it just like attaching that additional piece of information for council, like we can approve it as a board, knowing that when it goes to council.
There's kind of two things, we're approving, here we're approving one, two and three are being approved by council, correct?
Yep.
So, I think we just go, I think we should just go ahead and approve.
Fair.
Yep. Makes sense.
And then two and three, what, they can have discussions with the owner, figure out the number of clients per day, number of, uh, visits per week. Parking, parking stalls, that can be all done at a later time.
And that recommendation can flow through in the package for council, and then I can just explain to council that it's really just. Um, it, it's really up to council, this is just a recommendation based on best practice.
Yep.
Well, it's also based on what they're looking for in this specific.
Well, to not make, yeah, to not overcomplicate it too, like, she physically cannot see more than a certain number of people, so going for like a high num- like twenty-five. She never sees more than twenty-five people a week, so like.
I, I am strict with that, cause I wanna have longevity in the career, so.
Okay, exactly, all right, count on Bob.
What about staff, like, would she be entitled to hire staff that could each see five people?
I don't have, I don't have staff. She's a.
You don't now.
I don't, I won't ever.
I've never had.
You don't know that, sorry, you don't know.
Just a sec, Bob, just a second, that, that's a question, that's a question for staff, not for her. Um, Stephanie, can you answer Bob's question?
Um, well, typically you would see a massage therapist, they operate independently, so when you do see them go into a commercial space, they actually rent. Um, rent a chair or the massage table, and they operate independently as a contract. And they're, the overarching business is just the, it's just the space. So, her as a massage therapist, she goes in, she rents the space, and she operates independently, um. And everyone has to have their own, to my knowledge, every massage therapist has to have their own license independently. Um, she can correct me if I'm wrong.
Great, thank you for that, in my understanding, in our zoning and development bylaw, when we define home occupation. It's usually for the homeowner to run the business from their home. Yeah, and she did just state that she's not gonna have any staff, um, I don't know. David or Stephanie, is there anything to add before, um, councillor Beck has another question?
I, um, I can, through the chair, I can state that through five point nine, section five point nine, um. There's a maximum of one full-time employee and then, uh, or two part-time employees, so that's what the bylaw stipulates.
Great, okay.
And then they can't, um, contract work out to other persons, uh, that are not located in the dwelling, so those things are stipulated in the bylaw.
Thank you for that, anybody else, councillor Beck, you had.
No, I was just gonna say, just by the outline that was provided, it's one room in the back. That twelve by ten room in the back, so it's it looks like everything's kind of laid out in terms of what this specific variance is for. So I'm co- I'm comfortable with.
So, so if for today, the recommendation from the planning and heritage department is to recommend to council to um allow this major variance. So if the board wants to put a resolution on the floor to allow an appointment-based home occupation to accommodate a massage therapy business, and then that's the only thing that this board has to approve. And then from there, council will deal with number two and number three through this, through with with some assistance from the staff. And on a silver lining note, we're embarking on all kinds of changes to our zoning and development bylaw that's going to help us really help define some of these perplexing um pieces of our zoning and development bylaw. But we'll just park that one for now. So does somebody want to, um councillor Beck, okay? And seconded by Jackie, to um accept staff's recommendation to encourage the planning board to recommend to council that the following major variance for the subject property addressed at seventy-two Queen Street be approved to allow for an appointment-based home occupation to accommodate a massage therapy business. And that council then will establish the approved number of clients permitted to visit per day and a maximum number per week and the required onsite parking for the proposed home, home occupation. Okay? Any questions on the resolution? All those in favor? Oh yes, Sin, you have a question?
Yes, I just have a comment it just to make on this, uh you know, you know, I I understand the planning board is a recommending authority. It is not an approval authority at the end of the day. The council makes a decision on on every application. And if any application that we hear, you know, just to, you know, to make more informed land use decision and then go to and 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 recommend it to the council and based on our recommendation, the council, obviously the council has the power to make, you know, their own assessment. You know, and this is 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 little, you know, uh unique to me because, you know, the bylaws are written in a way that, you know, in 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 other applications, where we have, you know, we discuss parking sites, we discuss, you know, the whole developmental plan. And yet in this case, you know, you know, there, we're basically making a recommendation that you decide, we cannot recommend on this. Um I think just for a note, again, I'm not using, talking specific on this application, on specific on the recommendation. You know, I think the planning staff must go back and look into this uh as we move forward so that, you know, there is no conflict or, you know, ambiguity about the roles and responsibilities of the planning board. Having said so, I I I do support this application.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. And staff have taken note of this interesting um um piece of the bylaw. So if there's no more questions, all those in favor? And Sin, you are opposed, okay. Anyone opposed? You're ap- okay, one opposed? Okay. So um all in favor and Bob, I mean, is opposed. Okay, so that will move on to council. Thank you everyone for that um hea- healthy debate. Um introduction of new business. Seeing none, motion to adjourn. Being by Lee, session by Jackie, all those in favor. Thank you everyone and have a wonderful evening.